This conference will now be recorded.
Mayor Ferrero.
Here.
Mr. Gandy.
Here.
Mr. Bowles.
Here.
Mr. Campos.
Here.
Mr. Booker.
Here. Mr. Campos will lead us in prayer and pledge.
Which is all in prayer. Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening. We also want to thank you for hearing and answering our prayers. And for all the blessings you brought, we still have the thoughts. We just ask that you continue to guide us, Lord, and to help us to do what is best for our community. And that we're all able to help everyone, especially those in most need. Help us to be good stewards of our citizens' money and allow us to make the best and most right decisions that we can make for the good of our entire community. We also want to pray for the peaceful repose of the soul of our friend Marshall Newman, who's recently passed. We also want to pray for peace, comfort, and consolation for his family and for his friends. And we ask this in the precious name of Jesus Christ's name, which will live in height with you and the Holy Spirit. One God, forever and ever. I pray that the Lord will be the light of the United States of America and is the great light for which his saints, one nation under God, in the goodness of God, with their feet and arms to spread out. I'm Louisa Black, of the state of New Mexico, the state of San Antonio, working for the ships and all the United States of America.
Thank you, Mr. Campos.
Sure.
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with two omissions because please, if we amend Resolution 2021-09, approval to advertise according to 587 for readjustment, and Resolution 2021-091, approval to amend UHT eligibility.
Second, this was made by Commissioner Campos, second by Commissioner Gandy. Is there any further discussion on that? There's no further discussion. Roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Mr. Campos.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor Ferrero.
Yes. Do you have another motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to the Federation of Men's October 11th, 2021.
Say.
Supposedly was made by Commissioner Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Campos. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Bowles.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Mr. Campos.
Yes.
Mayor Ferrero.
Yes. Moving on, Commissioner Staff reports, Shannon.
I have an empty report.
The board have anything for Shannon?
Yes, I have a question, Shannon. With our audit, our findings last year, there were three findings with the city at work. And I was wondering how we are as far as moving forward. See that we don't have issues like that coming up this year with the findings that we had from previous year.
I'll look into that and see what they are.
Okay. I think this, let me know when we're done.
Sure.
Thank you.
Our new audit begins this November. Is there any more questions for Shannon?
Fair for y'all. A lot of this is the GRT. As you can see, it came in higher than we expected at 628,000. So that's a good note, but other than that, I have a bit.
Any questions for Mr. Bowles?
We didn't get that paperwork, but I got a lawyer's check. I got a copy of it. It's not the one I, yeah, the one I got was just the lawyer's check.
I have a copy.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just again, Anthony.
Yeah.
As far as our audit last year, any more findings? How are we as far as moving forward?
Moving forward.
I need to add.
Yeah, moving forward well. I actually have each explanation of each finding we have and explain how we're working on it and what we're doing. If you want a copy of that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Thanks a lot, too.
Okay, and how are we shaping up as far as our... I'm sorry.
You're fine.
A second. As far as in December here, our timeline for our audit, how are we coming forward on that?
We're getting all the information they asked. We're getting to this right now. We've had stuff we've been sending over the last three months, so we're working on it. So hopefully we'll be, we'll be good.
I'm sorry, just want to make sure that we're in the same situation.
I think the pandemic helped because they weren't actually here doing it. So it's hard to, let's say you miss something and have to go. It's easy to go to the foul cabinet and look in there instead of being at home and trying to find it there. Still, totally, like I said, I'm pretty confident.
Thank you, man.
Is there any questions? No further questions. Mr. Bowles?
Yes, as fast as weekend, I'd just like to say, White House, Loveyton Main Street, Loveyton Chamber, they had a content put out. Thank you very much. It was a really good turnout. A lot of people were there. I'd also like to thank our internal police chief, Eva Miranda. They had a good presence of Loveyton Police. And Sheriff also had a bunch of officers there, too. And I really appreciate that. Thank you guys very much.
Mr. Bernard. Yeah, I just want to say, you know, a lot of talk has been going on around town about the animal shelter out there in animals. I may have visited out there last week, last Thursday. Our animal shelter, dog pound, whatever you call it, is in dire straits. You know, we haven't like put aside for that, but the place, you know, it's, you know, I know the public wants to know whether you really have been out there to see the place. But I toured it, I visited. Have a ten, haven't been out there. There's no ground out there on the floors and operating rooms and stuff like that. The place is just, it needs, it needs a little help. Plumbing, electrical, stuff like that. And I know we have money set aside for it. The money we have set aside for is really electrical plumbing would actually take probably a little over 150. And that 150 we have set aside for. So I'm just saying, you know, a lot of people are donating. I know Ms. Saxton and a lot of other people have donated money for the animal. I think we should have a little over 10,000, $12,000 set aside to have a ready shot, Houston, seconded, whatever it takes to get it done, but I understand the facility itself. In my personal opinion, is not worth saving. I think we need to just look forward, you know, we have a vision. Let's sell the place, build a new facility, get behind that, you know. And a lot of people say, oh, this is a little bit, but that's been there since the 60s, 50s, since Dr. Clark had it. We really need to just try to move on and get something else.
Thank you, Bernard. Mr. Campos?
I'd just like to make a quick mention of Chief Newman. He was a mentor of mine, like any of you guys in this room as well, the public. He was also a great friend, a great colleague as a commissioner. He was a public servant, and he did, he served well. So if we could just hold a moment of silence for just a second, please. Thank you. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campos. Mr. Gandy?
I have nothing to say.
Thank you, sir. Hillary?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Ryan?
I have five items briefly about that.
Yes, sir.
First is all three canines were successfully retired to their handlers last week for resolution passed by this commission. Staffing, we had one certified applicant last week. Two non-certified applicants are currently in the pre-employment process. One cadet will hopefully graduate from police academy in December. Reference to Commissioner Campos's inquiry about the $1,900 charge at the NMJC. That was for simunition training so that two of our officers can conduct simunitions, training for our agency. Simunition stands for simulated ammunition. It's used in the military and police forces to replicate real life situations. Third, units. Even though we are still down a substantial number of officers, due to accidents over the past two years resulting in units being totaled and not replaced, and two units blowing out of their engines in the past two weeks, usable units are becoming scarce. So solutions I am working on are, one, transferring of units from admin to patrol with minor modifications. Two, a cost study of the possible purchase of three new units strictly for patrol in the next three to six months. And more immediately, Sheriff Hilton has offered to donate four of their recently retired 2016 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor units to LPD. Although these units have somewhat high mileage, they are highway miles and the vehicles have been normally intined. They have no issues and are ready to go except for infrared radios, which we have. This will hopefully be approved at the next, at next month's county commission meeting. And then all we'd have to do is to have them re-decal, so it's basically no cost to us. And it's a good short-term fix until we can revamp our fleet management program and begin to rebuild. And then finally, Commissioner Holt brought up a speed bump study. I would suggest the permanent chief to undertake a study and presentation to the commission for what are known as traffic calming devices, applications that are determined to be trouble spots involving speeding and racing. This would involve input from the public as well by each district, as well as the study of the various types of devices. And then we can bring that to a discussion later, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions?
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Chief, you also mentioned, you mentioned the simulation that you discovered that PD did purchase some rifles or weapons.
Yes, sir.
Would be able to use that simulation, is that correct?
Yes, sir. So it's, that training is immediately useful to our department.
Thank you for the research.
Yes, sir.
And also, I'd like to thank Mr. Jackson, Sheriff, and Commissioner Holt for making that offer to us. We appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Yeah, no other questions? Crystal?
Nothing.
Attorney McMahon?
American commissioners, I don't have anything to do.
Or have any questions for Mr. McMahon? No question for Mr. McMahon? I open the door for...
I'm sorry.
Yes, question?
I have one more thing that, that will be all the commissioners need to sign tonight with the adoption of the budget.
Open before the week.
Yeah, before the week.
Thank you. So moving forward, open the door for a public comment. So your comments to three minutes. Appreciate that. Door, door.
So this has been weighing on, on heavy, Cali winds are, Loveyton Main Street, best. So back in June, I think it was, when the city finally decided to pay Main Street their second quarter and third quarter at the same time. Anyway, y'all decided to cut our funding by 15,000. I don't know if Chambers' funding was cut or not. Was it cut? Okay, so, but economic development was not cut. And I asked David about it, and he said that economic development gets their money from Lito funds. Well, Main Street and Chamber get our money from lodger's tax right off the top. So in other words, the funding for Loveyton Main Street and the Loveyton Chamber does not come out of the city's general fund. So now, $15,000 is, or what, and whatever this Chamber got cut, is just sitting in lodger's tax doing nothing. Because according to what I understand, the city can't touch that lodger's taxman except for what it's supposed to be used for. So I want to know why we got cut. Yes, the lodger's tax might have been less, but we have not met in over two years to get out, give out money requested for lodger's tax. So we haven't been funding anything outside of the Chamber and Main Street. Half lodger's tax. So that's just a question, you guys.
I'll get back with you on that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sheila Laws. And I'm here to address Detective Miranda. I went to see you on or around October 2017 regarding my daughter Tiffany being beaten up by her husband on a regular basis. This was on Council of Sad, and you said there was nothing you could do about. Four, four months later, when my daughter's partially dead body was found outside her RV that she had moved into after getting a divorce. And myself and my family arrived at the crime scene. There you were, all booted and suited because you were part of the drug task force. And even though we were mere yards away from my daughter's dead body, you made the call and refused us the privilege of seeing her or saying a prayer over her. You said you knew her from porn or runnings, and you'd already identified her body. I went to the funeral home after she came back from autopsy. Now the protest, I did get to see my daughters and say goodbye as any parent would. She was being treated like a true throwaway, and she was not, she was loved. And no parent or no mother should have to see their child after an autopsy. It's something that stayed with me forever. I started crying as the funeral director said she had to take stickers out of my daughter's hair before I could see her. And I always thought bodies were cleaned up at autopsy and they weren't. When the crime scene was finally turned over to the family at the end of the day, which was taken over by the sheriff's department because it was on 17th Street. And this attachment was left along with the search warrant and the affidavit for the search warrant. And, and it left a complete lip of everything. The blood, it said the blood was coming from Tiffany's mouth, and there were spruces in her feet. Were cut up, and it was two by four on the car, and the list of all this is on the same day she died. And now we got the, my questions for you are, why didn't you let us see the body at the scene?
Let me answer. No. One of my choices is...
You would have to turn it up.
Because it didn't happen in our jurisdiction. Yes, so we weren't involved.
But you were the one that made the call that I couldn't see Tiffany and I had to see her after the funeral home. I just wanted people to know what kind of person you are.
Thirty other public comments?
Yes. My name is Clint Lauren. I haven't been in a while. I'm sure a few of you know me. I have a couple of questions. One, why would it not be easier to fix up parts of the animal shelter than get rid of the city property? We've already given one of the properties to the county for the trash, the dump site. City's in bad shape. We don't need to be really getting rid of property. Where would you build a new one? Would you have to buy any property or you have property already owned that you could build one on? Another thing, we've got a lot of water leaks that are pretty, they didn't just pop up during COVID. I mean, these things, a lot of them have been going on forever. The cheese plant. Who's paying that water bill? We are. I don't think the EDCs is going to cough it up, and if they are, it's probably coming out of the city's money anyway. I could be wrong, but stuff needs to be taken care of, another thing. And, you know, I'd probably, whatever. But, you know, you guys, you guys have been in control of this city for a few years. Some of you are newer than others. We are in this position because of the decisions you made. The town is in poor condition because of the decisions you've made. I would really ask that all of you give up your seats. David, you're a great guy. All of you are great guys, but you're not doing a good job for us. You're doing a really poor job for us. Scotty, I feel like Scotty stands alone. He's against a lot of the stuff that you guys do, but you know, you can't do so much. Scott, I haven't been here in a while, so I haven't really seen anything from you, but I, I hear that you're, you're trying to help too. But guys, you guys have got us here. Your best thinking, your best decisions have got us here. And another thing, each one of these people at this, this table, they need to have a report every meeting. You can't sit here like Gary, you have anything to report? Nothing to report, sir. We're broke. You don't think you could report that in two weeks? I mean, you guys, we, you owe us to have each one of these have a report every meeting. And I think it's pretty sad that you would rather just like, okay, 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 and get through with the meeting. You guys are making a little salary plus insurance apparently for some of you. That's earned, earned. Requiring these people to do their jobs. And if giving a report is not their job, why are they here? What are we looking for? Anyway, that's all I have to say. Appreciate you.
Thirty other public comments?
Jeanette Ferris. I have a question regarding the animal shelter. Is that property that is currently owned by the city of Loveyton?
Yes.
Okay, and it's rented out to?
Yes.
Okay, is there supposed to be some sort of relationship between who rents the property and care given to the owner?
It's under contract, yes, ma'am.
Okay, but is that part of the contract that care will be given by the debt that, that rents that property?
Yeah, a reduction, a reasonable rate.
Okay, so, so the rent is not as high as it would be if that wasn't in the agreement, is that correct?
That should be.
Okay. When I was a kid here growing up, I remember that Loveyton was referred to as the city with the big heart. And a lot of wonderful things happened. What I'm wondering, instead of the gentleman brought up about maybe doing something with what we already have, my question is, has any creative thinking occurred in regard to getting the public involved in, in making improvements to our, our facility? We've got a lot of creative, very generous people in this community. Has that ever been approached before we, and do we currently own a property that we're going to move the facility to? If that is the direction we take?
Yeah, what is currently what we did, we received a grant, and we have not been, yeah, like, should be received. We have many decisions on, on the direction that we're going to do it. We've just been tossing around options right now, but we haven't sat down and put a pencil to it and figured out what we do. It's just, it's just that when you know money's coming, we're just kind of talking about it, I guess, and so forth, but we haven't, but...
So currently, no property has been purchased?
So we're, I asked for already getting a cost analysis of a new facility versus re, re-moderating our current facility. So that way we'll start there, that way we know what costs are going to be, occur, and then we'll move in that direction. But if it outweighs, if it just, if the new facility outweighs the costs of just currently renovating, then the board will make that decision if they so choose. But we haven't done that yet.
So can the community have assurance then that nothing will be done in terms of closing that facility until there's a place to live?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we, by all we have.
It would be a direct transfer?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
This is Rodriguez. I'm here also about the water leaks just around here. I'm representing the church there on Dotcom Road. Right now, currently, there's a leak right now. It's flooded into our property. It's not the first time we've had floods in our property. Just question, what can we, what can I do to fix that line? It's a city line, but it, it always goes to our property. Our concerns is, in our near future, we're planning to build in that places where it floods. We don't want to have anything, any structural damage where you think, where we build stuff. That's just our concerns and questions. See what you have to do.
Have you reported the leak yet?
We have.
Okay.
I have, I reported it yesterday. It's been going on since Friday. Called the after-hours police station. They advised me to come and speak to y'all today. Advised to see what I have to do to about it. And this is, this has not been, this has been for years already, that line. I have pictures here if y'all want to see the floods or when it goes to our property.
If you can give me that address, just hand it back if they're not, or if...
I don't have the address on here, but here's a picture from there of what we have.
In the last, last couple of weeks, we had a, we've had a few lift stations, troubled, about three lift stations being stacked. And now they're 2.47 for a week, solid two weeks, maybe three weeks. So now they're bad in the water lines this week.
Yeah, because I believe that line, that line's been passed probably every, every two feet has been passed probably. Something concerns and questions.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, because I believe that line, that line's been passed probably every, every two feet has been passed probably. Something concerns and questions.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor. I just want to think a little bit more about the animal shelter. Oh, Elaine V. Hill. I would like to know, I do know that Dr. Hornbeck has evidently approached the city about possibly purchasing the shelter or the vet. And I understand that for some time, she has not been doing the things that she needs to do by helping bay and neuter. And I'm wondering if you, as a commission, have yet approached Dr. Hornbeck about what she is wanting to do. Because I understand that she came to the, either David Rodriguez sometime in March, and she was supposed to advise, she had 90 days to decide. And it's been past that. And if there's been any communication, excuse me, any communication with her as to what her intentions are. Because until we know what she's going to do, how do we know how to pursue this matter? Because is she wanting to take the whole area? Is she going to buy just the actual building where she does her veterinary work? Or exactly, you know, what is her intentions? And I, I think we have to first address that before we can do anything else. And I, I'm very concerned, like I said, you know, our winter months are coming up. It's not like we're going to have 20 inches of snow. Well, we might. But we need to be prepared. Because I think in this city, we do have people that really care for the animals, and we would like to get them out and adopt it if they can be adopted. So I think the main thing we need to do is to find out what Dr. Hornbeck is doing.
Yes, and we did extend her contract due to RP we issued. And also, we're going to appraise it and see if she still wants to purchase it after the appraisal.
Okay.
She may not even want to, depending on the cost wise, we may decide that she don't want to purchase it.
Okay.
But we did work out a few things where she's still there, but her contract is already up. And we just extended it for a few months, just like the state and night days. Night days are still going to be, but the contract is already expired, but we extended it just, just to get, get more information about what we're going to do with this system.
Okay, good. That will be good. Now, Shelley could not be here tonight. She's still. But we have collected, I think, over $12,000. And there's also within tan cement pipe donated by some people. So whatever, you know, we can come up with, I think it will really help the community.
Thank you. Thirty other public comments? There's no other public comment, but move on to non-action items.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, the first will be a bond discussion by Anthony and a presentation by Brad Ex. I'm just taking Brad Ex with our lawn agent. Anything to talk about the, um, bonds?
Good evening, Mayor and commissioners. Good to be here in Lovington with you. It's, uh, been quite a while since I've been able to get out here in person. So, uh, this evening I just wanted to give an update, uh, a look at bond portfolio. Uh, an update on the market where it currently stands and then update you on a couple of refinancings that we're, uh, working on with the city. So I have a presentation here this evening, this evening, which I'll, uh, work through and discuss, uh, starting here on page four. So part of what we look at, uh, in regards to your, your debt portfolio, your borrowings, um, is some of your credit strength and some of the items that go into that. And of course, your tax base on the property tax side, but also on the gross receipts tax side. So if you're on page four, uh, is a, is a historical look at, uh, the property tax, the valuations we've seen. As you can see there in the top left chart, um, some pretty steady growth over the years. Uh, and this property evaluations, um, feeds into your abhorrent tax or the property tax that you have, in order to bring in some of the operational dollars. So that tax rate is represented in the top, in the bottom right there. Uh, it's held steady over the years, right about, uh, four mils, uh, which equates to, uh, four dollars per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. But the tight top right hand corner is a look at your general obligation bonding capacity. You all don't have any general obligation bonds or bonds that are repaid through, um, an additional mill levy based on each, uh, property. But should the voters ever approve a project and decide to go out with that, there's approximately four point five million available for projects. Again, those have to be voted approved. Moving on to the next slide here, um, looking at the, the GRT collections. As I'm sure we're all aware of, um, there's been a big hit here over the last, uh, couple of years with COVID, the decline in oil and gas. This is, you know, the primary revenue stream of the city. Uh, and so, uh, we've tracked this, we look at this, uh, on a historical basis back in fifteen. We're about, uh, ten million in annual revenues. This year, I was happy to hear there's a, uh, increase, uh, that it started to, uh, take up again. It's a good sign. We ran just an annual, annualized figures and we estimate about five point eight, five point nine here for, uh, the fiscal year twenty one. Again, just some, some data points for you, obviously that, um, you know, constrain some of the budget and also uh, constrain some of your, uh, project financing and funding capacity, uh, using those type of revenues. Right, that's a little bit of background on some of the revenue stream. I'm going to move on to slide seven here. Walk you through your, your current debt portfolio. So, um, here on slide seven, in, in the blue and green, those are two different bonds. There was one that was issued in twenty fifteen and then another one in twenty eighteen. These are repaid through the Hold Harmless GRT, uh, that was, uh, implemented back in, uh, twenty fifteen specifically for some projects like this. Originally the thought was you'd be able to use this every two to three years. We've had to, uh, put a pause on that with this, with this recent decline. But together those give you, um, a particular debt service and structure. Those equate to about, about four hundred thousand a year in payments. The next slide is a, just a bar chart, um, of the annual payments that you have. You can see there's a drop down from twenty two to twenty three, twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. Um, again, that was, um, that was that spot where we were, uh, trying to create some capacity for you so that you could potentially finance another project at that point without increasing your debt service payments. Um, as I mentioned, uh, we're on, we have a bit of a pause right now. We're going to let that drop down. I can give you all a little bit of a relief there. Um, that'll be about seventy thousand dollar reduction in your annual payments for those. Next slide on, uh, page nine, we have a look at your twenty nineteen municipal gross receipt bond. Uh, this one's a little bit smaller. It was originally one point four. I believe this was for some of the, um, fire apparatuses, the ladder trucks. It's about a hundred and seventeen thousand in payments each year. That one is paid off in twenty thirty three. Then moving to the next slide, these are the, um, this is the last debt. And this one, this one really isn't, um, on the city's shoulders. This is what we call a lease revenue bond. Um, and this is the state's court project that they, uh, needed some assistance with, uh, the financing. They didn't have, uh, the financing channels themselves. Uh, and they're working with the city on what's called, uh, on a lease purchase type transaction. So, uh, even though the city, um, acted as a, what we call a conduit issuer, it's basically a pass through for the project financing, uh, you do not have, uh, any, any, um, repercussions as far as the payments. If the AOC in the state doesn't provide and appropriate those lease payments to you all, uh, you do not have to make up that difference. So it is a, it is a, uh, a straight pass through to, to the state of New Mexico. That project is, as you all are aware, for the public's sake, it is behind schedule. Uh, so the state has come, uh, to us recently in the city and asked, um, uh, for a little bit more money uh, and a little bit more time to complete this project. And so, um, working with the NMAFA, with the city, uh, with the, uh, legal councils, we're working on that restructure right now. And I have some, uh, results for you here in just a moment. I'll show you that. Um, on page eleven, the next slide here, again, it's just a, a representation of payments, uh, for that, uh, project and bond for the AOC Administrative Office of the Court's, uh, new courthouse. Okay, moving on to, uh, page thirteen, please. This is, um, at the suggestion of the mayor and staff, uh, they asked that we look through your debt portfolio for some opportunities to, uh, save some money. Interest rates, as, as you're probably aware, have been very low over the last couple of years. Um, and it provides some opportunities, uh, to lock in a lower, uh, payment, lower debt service through a lower interest rate. Uh, with municipal finance, municipal debt obligations, there's usually, um, there's a, there's a lockout period where you can't refinance that. You agree to investors that I'm going to pay you at least for five, ten years, uh, before I go and refinance that loan. So you do have one, the twenty fifteen bonds, uh, that were available for, uh, refinancing. So, uh, we ran those numbers, working with Mr. Dobbs. We've come up with, uh, a structure that can save, uh, the city about a hundred thousand over the life of this loan, uh, which equates to a little over five and a half percent compared to what you were paying. So this would be, uh, uh, refinance with the NMAFA. We've been working with them as well. They, they expect to provide a firm offer to you. Um, and so at the next, uh, commissioner's meeting, uh, you'll actually have a resolution, uh, in front of you to consider to, uh, go ahead and apply, formally apply to the NMAFA so that you can go to the board, uh, NMAFA board meeting and have their consideration of a, of a loan offer with the new rates. So, uh, that's about twelve, thirteen thousand a year. I did want to point out one item on this because, you know, um, people don't like extension of debt, neither do we. This extends by one year. I wanted to explain why that is. Your current loan is with the Leak County State Bank and they require what's called a, a debt service reserve fund. And that debt service reserve fund is, uh, somewhat of an insurance policy. If you're not able to make a payment, they can tap into that reserve to help make the payments. And so with the NMAFA that do require this, it's, it's equal to about one year's, um, payments. Um, and so that is added in and it's an extra amount you got to finance, but it also is released in the final year. So even though you're adding a year, in the last year, that reserve fund is released to make that final payment. Uh, and you still, um, on a net present value basis, save a hundred thousand dollars. So that's the first, um, um, item that we're working on and, and processing and working with you all on. Then I had mentioned, um, the AOC restructure. That's on the next slide here on page fourteen. That too is being extended one year in order to make their lease payment, they're going to provide to the city for, for leasing the facility. They need to keep that at a level that, that they can afford. So that's going to be extended one year. And then we're also adding in another capitalized interest period on the front end. And what that is, is, um, is some money set aside on the front end to make the debt payments in the first couple of years until they finish construction. So they're not going to provide a lease payment to the city until they actually occupy that facility. And so, um, this will not be approved. You all, uh, we won't make a recommendation that y'all approve this until we can see, uh, those lease terms that we can, uh, guarantee that you don't have, there's no recourse for the city, again, that it's only, uh, based on those lease payments coming from the AOC. They verbally and within emails told us they can satisfy all those requirements. So we do have a, uh, a business deal. It just needs to be put on paper. All right, so that's, um, that was a look at your, uh, historical revenues, your debt portfolio. Here in the back, I do just have a brief update on the, uh, current market, uh, starting on page sixteen. Uh, just a quick couple of comments is, I've already mentioned, interest rates, the cost of borrowing, has been, you know, near historic lows, near forty year historic lows for the last, last couple of years, really the last three to five years, we've seen very low rates. Uh, they continue to be very low, although over the last month, we've started to see a little bit of a tick up, uh, in interest rates. You know, some of that's probably due to, uh, the inflation, uh, concerns, uh, and, and the reality of some of that. It's due to, uh, some stimulus money, some of the bonds that are being purchased by the Fed. Really, it's interest rates low, so, uh, the Fed has started to indicate that they're going to taper off with some of their, um, uh, treasury bond purchases, which should, uh, help balance some of that out. But we do anticipate over the next year or two, uh, and three, that the, uh, borrowing costs and interest rates will start to tick up to, uh, more historic levels, uh, where they've been. On the, the chart on the bottom left here, this is a look at, um, the last ten years of interest rates. So the blue bars represent a range of where interest rates have been along the yield curve over the last ten years. And those, uh, orange and green lines, uh, they're represent where we are currently. So, um, even though we've seen a bit of a tick up, the orange line, uh, represents the high for the year. You know, relative to where we've been the last year, still very low borrowing costs, just letting you know that. Supply and demand has been another big factor for keeping, uh, the interest rates very low. In the municipal market, we've seen thirty three straight weeks of, of inflows into municipal, um, uh, bond funds. And so that means people, you know, are putting a lot of money into this market. They want to buy, uh, municipal bonds, whether it be cities, counties, uh, school district type bonds. You know, in, in typical times, you'll see kind of an ebb and flow between the equity markets, the municipal bond markets. But, um, that tremendous amount of demand for the bonds has also helped keep, um, you know, the supplier, I'm sorry, the, the interest rates low. So, um, another factor there. We're starting, we're starting to see that taper off a little bit. While there's still been inflows, uh, each week, it's not at the level as we saw, uh, just two months ago. So. You know, with, with that, I'll, I'll pause, happy to answer any questions, um, especially on those two loan restructures and refinancings, if you have any questions on that. Just let me know.
I have one question. It is something like, uh, here in the last thirty days, uh, knowing that the, I'm sorry, the master course and cost addition. Yeah. Card addition funding. Now, will we be dealing for refinancing and, or any type of, uh, or would it, is it going to affect us in any way? It also has to refinance this due to the increase in.
Yeah, yes, sir. Understood. Uh, so the lender on that one is, is the New Mexico Finance Authority. And there was one of those prepayment windows that was actually longer, but they've decided, uh, to waive that. And they're not going to, you know, charge any additional premium, um, or, or, um, refinance the additional cost for that. So, um, the answer is no. Again, it's not going to cost the city anything. All the costs that go into, uh, the restructuring, the additional documentation, the additional analysis we do is being picked up by the AOC through their lease payments to you.
So we're locked in at these rates here. We're not going to see if we have to do a jump in interest rates or anything like that. We're not fluctuating the market there. We're locked in at a current rate, correct?
All, all of your debt is fixed rate. Yes, sir. So you're not subject to floating rate or adjustable rate. Well, if any other questions come out, please don't hesitate to send them my way. Like I've mentioned, you will have a couple of resolutions in front of you at the next meeting. Your bond counsel is named as Daniel Alsop. You may remember his name from, from years past. He works with a module firm out of Albuquerque. He'll either be here in person or, uh, on a conference call to be able to explain what those are. But, uh, the first step really, it's just saying, um, we want these loans to go in front of the NMAFA board so that you'll provide us a loan offer. And then after they provide that offer, it's really where you lock interest rates, you agree to the terms and conditions. Uh, and there will be a final time to, uh, for you all to approve that.
Turn it twice about what? We appreciate your presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next non-action item is the commissioner's insurance discussion by Patrick McShannon.
So I've provided, uh, based on, uh, Mr. Wolf's report, just sort of outlining, uh, where we are on, on that issue. It, it seems that, uh, you know, it started, at least as far as I could tell, back to the mid seventies. Um, and so that's certainly before my time here. I started in two thousand and two. It looked like up until Pat Wise's, uh, tenure, sometime during that time, our insurance carrier provided for category for elected officials. Sometime when Pat was here, uh, that insurance policy changed and that category for elected officials was no longer available. And so what the city did is it kept offering that same, uh, policy that we have probably had since sixties to current commissioners and previous commissioners from Pat Wise's time up until today. And so it, it came to my attention about mid-September. Uh, that's when we took a look at a couple of different issues. One of the items on the agenda tonight is to look at, um, the new uniform, uh, healthcare, uh, that was dropped from tonight's, uh, agenda. But that is one of the other issues that's out there. So there are a number of things that this raises for us. But primarily what we're looking at is, you know, making some adjustments, and that's up to the council, not up to me, on how to move forward with the insurance coverage and what to do, whether to create that other category. Uh, I don't think there's any additional cost or expense as far as the policy itself. Um, there are costs and expenses as far as the coverage, um, but it's, it's all kind of laid out in that report. So if you have specific questions, I'm happy to, uh, answer those specific questions or there's part of the discussion. Happy to be part of that also. Part of it is to take a look at what is, was available for the city. And so a part of my goal is to take a look at it and say, is it something that we can or can't do? or can't do? And it looks like we can do that, we've got to make that change. All the other considerations about what should happen, shouldn't happen, is it a good idea, bad idea? Those are not legal decisions, but those will be up to commission on which way to go. So with that being said, and the report being available to the commission, I'm happy to answer any questions or, like I said, whatever else we need to, to address the issue.
Do you happen to know what ordinance I was as far as super commissioners receiving health insurance as I look back?
No.
A long time.
No.
Seen nothing in there.
No. So what I did is I visited with Shannon, went back and we took a look at what was available to the city. And we can't find anything that talks about that particular policy. And so I visited with the person that I thought was the most senior as far as the clerk position, and that was Carol Anne Hope. And I visited with her a little bit, sat down, ate some lunch and asked her about, when did she start working for the city? And was this policy in place? What were the considerations? What was going on? And that's the information she gave me, the anecdotal information, that at least as far back as mid seventies, that was something that was part of the city's policy. So I cannot find anything that shows a commission approved from, you know, mid seventies back that that exists. That doesn't mean it doesn't. It's just that, that was the policy that was going on at that time.
No, it wasn't like the mid seventies, my understanding either.
Yeah, I can't find anything. So, I mean, it could have started in forties, the fifties, nineteen seventy-four, I don't really know. But the only information that was available to me was what Carol Anne was talking about. So, and that's based on her experience and being in that position and being part of the building cycle and everything else that was involved. Just some general knowledge about, you know, at that time, when Carol Anne was here, excuse me, you know, I don't think we had a finance director. The city kind of operated a little bit different. And so many of the things that our finance director does and some of the other positions do right now, like Crystal and some of the other people we have, all sort of funnel through the city clerk. Their job was much more extensive than what we have. There was a lot less going on at that time, but they may disagree, but there was a lot less things that were happening. So that's where I wanted to look for that information. So I can't find anything that says it was or that it was not. The other thing I did is I looked back at my records to see if there was anything that the law firm had available to it that showed why there would have been a change when Mr. Wise was here as city manager. I didn't find anything. So if there was something to change at that period of time, this would at least been sort of a blip on my radar. But it wasn't until about September fourteenth, thirteenth, somewhere right around in there when it was brought to my attention and subsequently brought to, to your guys' attention also.
I also want to point out that Resolutions zero nine one, remove the amendment, the United Healthcare eligibility, that was removed because we're just waiting on the literature to be presented to us and then we make, so that's the reason it was removed this evening. But it is in the works with our, our hearing.
Yeah. And I, I think, Mayor, the other thing was that we did visit with the carrier about making that change in putting a category back in. I actually never looked at the policy that we would have in place in the mid seventies. I don't know if that's available to us or not. But part of the information I'm relating to you would come from our local representative for the carrier saying, this was in place at a certain time. I never looked at the policy, I can't say, but I think he would be knowledgeable in that regard and that if we wanted to put it back in, if the council wanted to put it back in place, that's something that's available to, to the city. So, and I, I think, Mr. Mayor, you visited with, with him also.
Yes.
So, is that your understanding of this take on this process?
I'll begin with Patrick because I was looking at our business, codes and how they get matches the wording, matches our ordinance for five sixty-seven, starts with the hard time question by employees.
Yeah, it doesn't, there's some other changes that have to happen with uniform healthcare.
Right.
And so that's one of the things we need to take a look at is if the council is going to look at it, make those changes, then what we've got to do is go back in, just like if we change dangerous dog ordinance, we've got to go back in and make some changes to that also. So everything gets up to speed and matches with what, you know, council decides to do. And we may also make some change because when it was brought to my attention, the first place I looked, and the senior partner at my office always tells me, it's been great advice, is, is start from the beginning, go take a look at what the law says. And so when this was brought to my attention, what I did is I went back and looked at the ordinance that the city has. And, and that ordinance doesn't talk about healthcare. It just talks about the payments that are made to council persons for meetings, those types of things. So my suggestion would be depending on how the council votes on this issue, or the commission sees, that we go back and make a change so that when, when someone's sitting thirty-four years in the future, they don't say, well, I wonder what this man, the commission was thinking back then, you know, why didn't they write this out? Why didn't they make some changes? And so that would be another area that we would need to take a look at is if you do want to make that change. And I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, but that we then go ahead and make sure that the ordinance that talks about that particular issue is updated and is as accurate as possible.
Turn in a question, but. Appreciate it.
The next non-action item will be a discussion about Crystal, about city property to RFP or to hold for city use.
Yeah, so we have some properties that me and the Funding and Zoning Commission discussed at our last operating. One of the properties is residential zone lot, it's twelve oh one West Tyler. This is a single family lot. It's sixty-eight by hundred and four plus feet. The Funding and Zoning Commission, see, you know, they could find of no use, the city would need this lot. There is a park in nearby area, so we wouldn't need to change that to a park. So their suggestion to commission was to, to sell this property. The next one is the six hundred, seven hundred block in North Chavis. In your packets, I have maps of where these properties are. On North Chavis, we have six lots that are directly side by side, and then we have another one that's just up a ways away from all of them by itself. So the, the B and Z board recommended that we look at, could those six lots, with the size that that is, that basically is a three hundred foot by hundred and forty foot area with the six together? Would that be a site that the city could use in the future for a building that the city requires or needs? But the one individual lot by itself, again, that's not large enough for any of the city's needs. So, you know, their suggestion was the one individual to sell it. Then we have over on East Jefferson, six to seven hundred block of East Jefferson, between Jefferson and Madison, there's a three acre lot. This is a multifamily residential zone. So the city putting a street department or something there, we couldn't do that because it's not zone fracture, and we wouldn't want our street department right by a bunch of houses. So what the Funding and Zoning recommended is that we get with EDC and see if she can find a developer who would be willing to come in and do some low income housing or something to that matter, which we, the city is in desperate need of low income housing. And if we got a developer that would come in and do a contract to develop that property within a certain amount of time, maybe we could sell them that lot at a discounted rate so to, to promote the development of it. Then the other property is the twenty-three twenty South Main. This, this is three small lots together, has one building on the three lots. The lots together are seventy-five foot by a hundred and three of them together. This little building does need renovations if anyone wants to move into it. I know street department and animal shelter both said it was not a big enough location for their needs. So I didn't know if the city had any other recommendations for what department could use that facility. So we just wanted to bring this to you to kind of get your opinion on what we should do with these properties.
It was me and cell city, single family housing, get that. And do we have any idea how much we would look for these properties? It's been waiting for years, I mean, lots sitting down or going for what, twenty-five, thirty thousand a lot?
I know, that is what I was told by a realtor is that the different lots, you know, being different sizes, they would phrase at different values. You're talking about the residential lot being two to twenty-five. These commercial lots down on Chavis, again, you're looking at the same amount for each one of those lots. The three acre lot, you'd look at forty-five to sixty thousand, just because it is three acres. You know, so yeah, it just depends, you know, we'd have to get some better estimates on those. Those were just some quick phone calls to kind of get a value for you guys. But of course, if you wanted to deck those in RFP, then we would do the due diligence of finding the actual value of those properties.
First of all, would you like to see the EDC pursue a developer for the low?
Low. I have spoke with them.
For running the, the loan and housing authority as it used to be prior, it's become regional. I know that is a great event, but as you know as well, it's probably about a year waiting to hit into a home. So there's a great reason for that. See that. Thank you.
Final non-action item is discussion of the city community project on the recreation fields by the Lovington High School Key Club by Mayor David.
I put this on the agenda, it just doesn't matter. Did you want to make a presentation for the Key Club? Last night, during our last discussion?
To let everybody kind of know what's going on?
Yes. So I put it as a discussion item because it was, it was just a public comment. This time I, I put it in a discussion time, not where you can press the board. And. See, I don't know how all this informality works, so you're going to tell me. So what, I'm Edith Taylor. So I'm a teacher at the high school, I'm co-sponsor with the Key Club. And so our, we are trying to do a big project. And so we picked the softball and baseball complex to do as our big project for this year. And we're starting with the softball fields, just because there's more use for that than it is just having one baseball field. And so we want to start out there by painting, bringing in aggregate, aggregates, and just any maintenance that needs to be done. And I talked last week with, and I didn't bring all my notes, I thought you knew what this was going to do, plus I just got out of school and I was like, oh, I gotta go. So, so our job has gone into three thirty, by the way. So, so I don't really have all my notes, but I talked with the guy at the road department or that department. I'd have to get. Bernardo. Yes, Bernardo. And so he opened up the bathrooms and like I said, the bathrooms, one bathroom was totally stripped. So my question was, would the city go in and put new poultry and all of that in there? My other question was, does the city have insurance that would cover the vandalism when something like that happens out there? Because I know as people use the field, they have to have their own insurance. So the softball uses it, they have softball insurance, soccer, so forth, all that. So I didn't know with the city, so that would be one question I would need to be answered. And, and then we would have, like I said, kids, people in the community, we know that we have to get waivers signed. So when we go out there, there would be someone there that can notarize the waivers so that we could get the people that work, that want to come out and help with all the community service that we're going to be doing, that we could get that going and start. So you're looking at painting, bringing in aggregates, stripping the fields, getting them back to working room pretty much. Bernardo didn't know if the water system, if the, if that was still working, because at one time it had flooded. And he was, he thought that all of the water sprinklers were fixed. So I don't know if that's been fixed or not. So he was going to check on that. So that's kind of what we're looking at doing. Already got some businesses lined up? Already been talking to people?
Thank you for the.
Yes. Can you do a written proposal to us if we have to end up, we can run it by legal and also for that will, you're going to have to go through that process. So if you would make, I know you made your presentation, but would you make a written proposal to the city? What do you want to do? We can find out.
So put a list of like what we would be doing?
Yeah, and then we can, we go through legal, the board will consider if they approve. It would start, starting at what date would you be looking at?
As soon as you can say go.
Come on.
Because it's fixing to get cold, so we want to kind of do as much as what we can do before it starts getting really cold and get it open. I know you said that there was a start date.
April versus.
April. So, but if we can get things going now, and even working with Bernardo and them guys and helping, that would be great. Because like I said, when he talked, there was no machinery that they would be able to use. So we would have to get people in the community to come out and bring, someone to level the field and scrape it and all of that, because they have no machines working.
Well, if you can give us a written proposal, then we can run through.
So how soon could it all be, once I get that to you? Who do I take it to?
Yeah, bring it to. City or?
Okay. Okay. And then the next meeting or?
Our next meeting. We'll have it in our next meeting. And then if we don't put it as action, depending on legal and order, if there's something arises, we get money. We're running, definitely be on our next board meeting. If, if, of course, it's planning, we should have it in about thirty days.
Okay. That's good. Any questions?
Just thank you.
No questions? We're ready for you guys to help. No, no questions? Nothing?
Water system work?
The brake works. I don't know.
Does it run off city water or wasn't it on?
I have no clue. I would assume.
Yeah. That's the only question. But no.
So, yeah, so I don't know. I would assume since the sprinklers, they were, the city water. So we got that answered.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Moving on to action items, do I have a motion? Resolution one twenty-one to one seventy-five, approve the first quarter DFA report. Second, that total was paid by Commissioner Danny, second by Commissioner. Mr. Donald.
We'll start off with this paper here, it says first quarter balance submitted to DFA. This is the numbers I will be submitting to DFA on the thirtieth, if this one is new. I wanted to point out, if y'all do that cash balance at the very end, it does say eleven million dollars in cash balance. You have to put in mind that this is due to the bonds we have, the loans we have that are already allocated to projects. Also, you have to think about the COVID fund we got, was the COVID fund, lead fund, that was around one point four million dollars. You have to think about that. And lastly, you should think about the cash balance that we had, that we rolled over from last year. That's one of the amounts so much bigger than expected. We're already have that money allocated to different projects that we have for the city and different bonds and. We're already having that money allocated to different projects that we have for the city and different bonds and moments. Also, if you take a look at the general fund, it's, it's in the black, but we just need to make sure we keep an eye on it to make sure we have the the mandatory reserves that we need in our general, in our general fund. And also in our water and wastewater, which the water and wastewater fund are doing good as of right now. We should be looking at a pretty good amount at the end of the fiscal year. Hopefully, it keeps going up like that. So because we have future repairs that we're gonna need to do on the wastewater plant and the water plant. So we're gonna keep an eye on that so we can put those repairs that need to be done to the wastewater plant and water plant. So also.
Anthony, you want me?
Yeah, sure.
Yes, sir. Well, we go to the general fund and how, how are we in relation considering what we have in regards to what the state requires?
We're about, we're a little bit below what's required about that, but we're still. And this is because the first of the quarter, we had a lot of annual payments that had to be done. So we spent a lot of money in the first quarter from the annual payments, like insurance, some insurance fund and projects that need to be, that need to be paid for. But right now, we're just below it. But the good thing is hopefully DFA will waive those mandatory has to be the mandatory rules on that like they did last year, hopefully. But as of right now, it looks promising. It's growing. So right now, we're just a little bit below it on the, in the general fund, but the water and solid waste are doing well. But like I said, the general fund, it does fund multiple funds, so we have to keep an eye on that.
What percentage would you say?
It's a reserve we have, I think it's 112. It's 112, yes. You know, 112 of what we have budgeted.
Where we, you said. What percentage do you think we're below that?
We're about, I'm about 1% off. We're almost there. We're almost, we're almost where the reserve should be. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I want to roll over that. Okay, also you will see the amounts that we had to transfer such as the, you'll see in the two balanced funds with transfer funds that was approved in the budget such as the Glasgow building for the, the last, the fire department building, which was built by Alaska, that amount of that payment, which was $184,000. It wasn't budgeted, but the good thing is we have a budget adjustment right now to adjust for that. Also, we had to transfer money into the cemetery, the senior center, lead theater, and the solid waste, which was all already approved. And we already saw that coming allocated for it. If you want to turn back to the very first page, it said the first quarter balance fund. This is not, I watched them to the DFA. I just wanted to show you all this. It's pretty much the bare bones of the first quarter. It just shows the revenues and expenditures. It doesn't show any investments or transfers or anything else. It just bare bones of what we spent and what we received. So I thought this was a good thing to have. As you see below, we have two, we have a, we have a surplus of $2.2 million in this quarter. It's a good thing. We should still think about different things we have allocated for, for the money that's in there right now. So we had the 1.4 for the, the COVID fund. And if you take that out, it's also, you have to think about the $700 bond payment that will be having to be made next month. But it's still, like I said, it's still good. We're still growing. It's, it's looking better. But that's, that's all I have right now. I can, I'll go. I'll just, I'll, I'll take out for and see the motor vehicle. The reason it looks like that is because of pandemic. They were only taking so many people. And we also hired another clerk to get ready for when the pandemic, it would get better and busier. So we'll be ready for it to be get busier, which it has been getting busier, busier. And they have been making more revenue in the last two months. So hopefully it will catch up. Also, you'll see the cemetery. We have that resolution to increase the rates, which that will help immensely for that amount. And the senior center grant and the NSIP, that's for the senior center. We haven't received the funding yet from the state. I usually get every month, so it's just a little bit late. Also, you'll see in the capital projects, Home Harmless, the 301. The reason for that is because the Glasgow, the fire department building, that $184,000, that's why that's there. But everything else you'll see a good amount in the waterfront, the wastewater fund. Those have been looking very, very good. But that's all I have. You have any questions?
There's no further questions. Go call motion.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mayor Devoe?
Yes. Make a motion for resolution 2021, that's 76 approval of the first quarter budget adjustment. Also made by Commissioner Gandy, second by Commissioner Compost. Further doubt?
Am I gonna go through every single one of the adjustments? Because it's mostly the wellness benefits that we give the employees. They weren't budgeted because we didn't really know how much people usually get for that. We didn't know people, we didn't know how many employees were gonna get the wellness benefit. So I put that in there. We also put in the redistricting, which is up to around $9,000. Also, the election was not in there as well, so I'll put that in there too. Professional services was increased, increased, and I put more training in there as well. If you go to the motor vehicle expenditures, I adjusted to the one additional clerk that we had that was not budgeted. The, for her salary and wages benefits and all the other stuff that has to do with the clerk. I also increased it in the cemetery for the new part-time employee, which includes salary wages and para. The bigger one is, let's see, the also we get to, I have to do a budget adjustment for the COVID relief fund that we got, the $1.4 million. We got more than we expected. We really thought we were gonna give 1.3, so we got 1.4, so I had to adjust for that. And just as I said, the Glasgow building, the fire department building, I had to adjust for that as well. Let's see, and then in the water and wastewater fund, we, or the wastewater fund, I had a adjusted for additional repairs that we know that's gonna happen. I just didn't want to give too much, put too much in there because we don't know all the repairs that's gonna happen in the future. But I just want to be ready for it. But other than that, I showed you on the first page of what the budget, the original budget looks like and then what it looks like now. But that's, that's all.
This question about the professional services, the difference was like $9,000 on there?
It was.
Or we missed?
Yes.
Could you explain that?
We, that's, that's how much that he quoted that it's gonna cost to redistrict through professional services. And that wasn't really, that wasn't, that wasn't budgeted. So I had to put that in there to get ready for that.
The original budget was $12,000.
Yes, so I just, it's a 12, that. It's, I added the 9,000 on there, so.
And it came in at 21,000. That's the reason for the difference, correct?
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, yeah, yes.
Then we got to foresee that.
No, no. We had no idea that was coming, the redistricting.
I mean, as far as the cost.
What's it called? We got the quote, we got the quote from, you know, we got the quote from research and polling. So that's how we got that figure right there. Yes. That's what he quoted us. So I didn't want to go below or above.
He quoted as a 12,000?
No, he quoted us for nine. The original budget in professional services was 12,000. I had to change the budget to 21, so the difference is at 9,000. So I had to increase the budget by 10,000.
There's no further discussion. And go call motion.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Compost?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Devoe?
Yes. Resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
As mayor, I'd like to make the motions considering 2021, 08, approval of Dawson, you know, physical company, permanent head of physical operations.
Second, also one made by Commissioner Compost, second by Commissioner Bernard. Crystal?
Yeah, commissioners, on this, I would actually ask you to table this or deny it. There's still wording not correct in the documents, the contracts. Mr. Dawson did get going back to me, but it was at after three this afternoon, and I was in meetings all afternoon and didn't have time to review. So I just, I need more time to review these contracts and get with him again to.
Pretty discussion. Do you like to amend your?
This really, I'm making a motion to table.
In this situation, the wording is not correct. Go ahead and deny, they can bring it back with the front of it. And then you can revisit it and go from there instead of table it in.
Can we not do the intention?
They go and finish the same basic motion on it, and with it not being worded properly, it's a little cleaner.
So that's your question, Jeff? Do what you wish.
All right, I'll change it to deny. We'll leave the motion as it is and we'll take it to.
Commissioner Gandy?
No.
Commissioner Compost?
No.
Commissioner Butcher?
No.
Commissioner Vogt?
No.
Mayor?
No. Resolution fails. Do I have a motion? Yes, sir. Just, I'd like to make a motion for resolutions 2021, 06, approval of cemetery rate increase. And rules and regulations change. Also made by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Vogt. Mr. Dawson?
Um, that's more.
So y'all have moved to this convenient to, like it's back in the planning, knowing Director Duncan is still with us. And this is what was agreed on. The contract, the fees are right there, what they're being changed to. On the monument placing, we did put an explosion on there as far as that concrete, the flange to exclude the rest pavement and the flush, the part of the cemetery, which is a new line. Because that's not required, land would not be required for that. But other than that, it's just what was presented to you. Mr. Duncan.
Shannon, do you give us a quick overview of what the, the charges are right now?
Right now, the law is $300. And the baby, the baby lots are 75. We haven't ever charged for transferring deeds. We do charge 25 for recording. And we haven't had a monument set in place in the past.
How much down payment is required?
Currently it's 20%, so we've changed that to 25. And also, right now, we don't have a limit on how long they can go making payments, and that's been changed to six months. Where could we revert that to the city?
Thank you.
I think both items are very important. One of them due to the fact that if non-payment has been, on many cases, we currently have non-payment on a lot of lots out there. So we definitely need that. Also, on our recording balance sheet, it did indicate if we had a $13, maybe a balance loss on that first quarter. So we need to have an increase in break to help that negative balance.
That's where you're going. Yes, Shannon, just one more quick question. These cemetery deeds are real bad. How do they compare to surrounding municipalities as far as taxes?
I think Oscar looked into that for, for Wyatt and got a good idea that this was kind of what everybody else is charging directly the communities around them in the county. So they're in line with, yeah, we've been following on.
We were below that?
Yeah, we were.
There's any further discussion? There's no further discussion. Go call motion.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogt?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Devoe?
Yes, resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
It's where you're letting me go. Falcon, you can send a resolution 2021, 08, set of approval of temporary suspension.
Also one made by Commissioner Compost, second by Commissioner Gandy. Crystal?
Yeah, this was sent to us by the state over, I think it was, it was while James was still here. So it was over a year ago. They had several areas through town that they designated as areas they needed to have access on or easement for either storage of equipment, placement of signs, just stuff for the construction project itself in Main Street. They brought it to our attention that this one got missed. There were several others that you guys approved through town, like in front of the chamber, the old Troy Harris building. We allotted some of that easement there for them to work in. We had allotted some easement by the Fran Ashman area, and that this is there in front of the library. So it's just an area where they need to be able to place signs and stuff like that during construction.
Is there any discussion by the board? There's no further discussion. Go call motion.
Commissioner Vogt?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes. Yes, resolution passes. Do I have a motion? For resolution 2021, that 088 approval to pursue the first commitment with the utility cooperative agreement. Second, also one made by Commissioner Gandy, second by Commissioner Bernard.
Yeah, so this resolution has to do with the, the actual Main Street project, our cooperative agreement with them, where they basically put our utility work in with the construction contract. There has a, these were the items they brought up in that agreement. After going over it with legal, we would like to take a little bit more time to review this before you guys do approve this.
So you're making the recommendation we table it or?
Yes, for us to review.
Mr. Gandy, did you make a motion? Do you like to amend a motion?
Yes, I'd like to table this. So the next meeting, is that not sufficient? Till the next meeting is an open for? Yeah, I think that was wording.
I'll second that. This was made to amend, second by, I mean, by Commissioner Gandy, second by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? There's no further discussion. Go call motion.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogt?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Devoe?
Yes, resolution is tabled, do I have a motion?
Square Olympic, make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-one, dash oh ninety-two, approval of complete the ARF for the multi-use trails.
Mr.?
Oh, that's young though?
No, no, it took both of them out.
I did a good job.
Alright, yeah, so we were.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Bolt. Motion was made by Commissioner Gandy, second by Commissioner Bolt, Crystal?
Yeah, so this was brought to me, um, this contract, we started back in twenty fifteen with the, um, with an MDOT. Of course, a different section in MDOT than what the Main Street project is, but, uh, we went in contract, um, with a grant with them to do the multi-use trail. Um, if you guys recall, it was a trail that went from Chapparal Park to what's, was going to be the Veterans Memorial Park. A walking jogging trail. Um, we did have design done on this by Pedegrun Associates, it went up to bid, they won the bid, they did do the design. Uh, and then, nothing ever happened with the project. I, I didn't know it was still going on until I was approached with this a few weeks ago. The NMDOT, uh, that is over this project, uh, due to the lack of us completing it, uh, they need us to sign up on this, um, ARF, or, um, we need to make plans to reimburse them for the money already used during design.
What's a sixty K?
Yeah, a little lower, a sixty-seven something.
And where's, what is it, if we?
So the project, we had until twenty twenty-six to complete the project. So, um, that's why I was saying, if we went with a, a figure of a couple of years out to actually being, beginning construction, of course, we're going to have to get Pedegrun to redo, um, in the design, it always talks about the wage rates and all that. That will have to be updated because those have all changed since this design. Um, so if we plan to have this, um, match, you know, within a few years, planning something out, it's easier to budget for it than if you just all of a sudden say, hey, we need this. Um, so we, if we can come up with trying to pursue this project in twenty twenty-three, and go out and try to get some construction started on it, um, that would be an option. Um, if we sign this ARF, that would be my suggestion, would be that we put it out that long to actually, we wouldn't be able to try to construct, start construction next year, I don't believe. But within two years, if our finances keep going, maybe we could.
And the question is, really, do we want to still pursue this project?
That is the question.
We would have to repay sixty thousand, but if we want to pursue it, uh, most likely we'd have to start construction in two years, which would be twenty twenty-three.
That was supposed to be for the veterans more of Chapparal Park, right?
Yes.
So we already know we have some issues with veterans. Memorial or, um, stagnant, let's just call it that right now. Um, so dragging this out doesn't seem like it would be that wise of a choice, because there may or may not be that veterans memorial there. It might be, but then we got a sidewalk nowhere, we already got so many of them. So, sixty K kind of hurts, but and then, and if I remember correctly, um, based off of the comments I got from some of the citizens, I, I don't remember it being a real positive feedback. I think that McGrom is back there with the recommendation, so. They could have been sneezing, I don't know, I got ready.
Chris, what was the matching funds on that? Did we already make the match or was that?
No, we still have to make a match to, to, the rest of the construction funds, we have to make that match. Yes.
So we want a hundred fifty, fifty Ks?
And any change orders that would ensue because we have to update the design because it's behind by two years already.
They're going to tell me just the cost of everything going up?
Yes, and the cost of materials has gone up since that estimate was done, the project manual was completed in twenty seventeen, so it is already behind. So we would have to have that updated, so there would be more cost back on the design to us.
I mean, it doesn't look good back now, but the reality of the situation is, okay, so if, uh, when we look, this is a hundred fifty-one K, with, uh, just say twenty percent increase in that, so you're with a hundred seventy-five, hundred eighty, our pocket cost, you know? And then we still have the project for the, the water and the sewer, and it'll be changed there, so they'll have to redesign all that stuff for that. So I could see some bigger issues, so that's just my suggestion.
And it is better to just pay that back?
What is the time for it, once we got to pay it back, and?
Uh, they, they have not said that yet, but I imagine when we don't sign this ARF, they will give us.
Pay it back?
Yes.
So I was going to go start the head over.
What's, since it's?
We have other, we have other issues that we need to take care of first before we even think about what we want to do.
Yeah, it's a, the cost savings. Especially the matching.
We have a cost labor of sixty-seven thousand.
Alright, journey for the discussion. Roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Compost?
No.
Mr. Bolt?
No.
Mr. Butcher?
No.
Mr. Gandy?
No. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, like, make a motion to consider a down payment. Shannon.
Also made by Commissioner Compost, second by Commissioner Gandy, turning it down.
Uh, the one I see that sticks out, is the Tyler Technologies payment, we, it's the annual subscription payment we make, not annual, but it's what we make every quarter. I have the actual invoice here, it shows how much we owe, how much we paid already, if you want a copy of this. Uh, I've got a copy of this, but that's pretty much the only one that sticks out, and it's, it's a contractual fee we have to pay that we approved on when we had Tyler Technology.
Often we pay them.
We actually paid one two months ago, we're paying double now. But that's. Uh, this one is thirty-three, but it's around, what we paid so far is, we've paid thirty so far. Now, we've paid. You know what, I don't have that amount on here, but how much we've paid already, let me get that to you. Then I'll give it, I'll email it to you all and let you all know what this, what it looks like and how much we've paid so far and how much we have left. Yeah, for this, eight year. Yeah, for the year, yes, sir, yes, sir. That's, that's all I have, that sticks out. Also, can you, uh, what the total cost is for the year, for that system? Yeah, yes. Is it all PD and so forth, that way they, we've got an estimate on what it's costing to run to the town. Okay, yes, sir.
I think it was thirty thousand for all side.
That's actually for the, um, wayfinding signs for the, uh, Main Street that we agreed to pay. We paid, um, the thirty thousand, we get reimbursed back the eleven something thousand back, but we still out twenty-one thousand. That was actually budgeted on, in there, but that's what that's for, it's called, it's called all the, all sign, outside company. And that's what, that's what that was for.
And, Jim? There's no further discussion, roll call, Volchan.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes.
Mr. Compost?
Yes.
Mr. Hee.
Yes. Compost, those are paid, do I have a motion for a motion?
Square Olympic, make a motion to go into position, the two of the stations, ten, that's hit through that one, in Mexico State, edited in nineteen seventy-eight, subdivision two, regarding the mental health matters, discussion to a one unit.
Also made by Commissioner Compost, second by Commissioner Bernard, roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Compost?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes. Yes, we are in both sets.